Month of meeting, month of September. Council meeting, board. It's good to see everyone here tonight. We thank you for being here. We have a visitor who I know well, who's at our church. So at this time, we can all stand. Gary Crone is going to kind of do an indication, followed by place of leave.
Gary?
Good to see you.
Good to see you too, Tony. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, glorious is your name. We ask for wisdom, courage, and honor for this deliberation tonight, through safety, and bring prosperity to the town of Lebanon. And these things we ask in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
James, if you pass. Anyone here that wishes to speak for the council tonight that's not already on the agenda, you need to see this line please. If there are any who are doing that, go ahead. If there's something that's not on the agenda, does any council member need to add anything at this time?
We'll have to have a closed session, Mayor.
We'll do that, yeah. We'll do that down there. Mr. Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Mary, Madam, Ms. Jackson, second. She get on at the end, any man? Then, two need these here. We've got minutes from the August 8th Raver Council meeting. That's pretty significant. That means we haven't met, actually met for months. We've had committee meetings, we haven't had one time. That's great.
That's a first.
That's a first. Okay. Everyone had a chance, I hope, to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Those, same side. And the accounts, Mr. Short, you have anything to add to the accounts tonight?
No, sir.
Mr. Gillen, have you reviewed those?
I have, Mayor. I don't have any additions. I do have a question for the Raver Council. The Hickup Brown and Company, the $3,500, is that just a consult or record-keeping or the book staying or you know about all?
That's the government accounting standard for our pre-audit.
Okay. Mayor, I'll move to approve the accounts. August, the council payables presented.
For a second.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those, same side. As advertising our local patient, at this time, declare us a joint public hearing with our level of planning commission. Mr. Coleman, at this time, I will turn the meeting over to you.
What? You do that form.
Yes.
He said he came here so he goes.
Yeah.
She'll interpret for you.
I'm right, yeah.
But she doesn't. If she needs to smack you, we'll tell her to do that thing.
May I, would you like to read it over here?
It's to consider amending the town of Lebanon zoning ordinance, stage one, commercial district section 21d2, A, 10 to the following. Hospital or medical clinic, now OPD, of your treatment program, or O, B, O, T, office space, appeal treatment facility shall be located within 13,200 feet, which is two and a half miles of a school or daycare facility.
Do you need the plan? I'm gonna stay.
If we have any discussion, if I have any questions.
Of course, Tim, as commission members, I'm pretty sure that this is our response from the Attorney General's response to the issues of these facilities in our town. So this is our effort to move forward and try to address this for many future endeavors. So that's, I'm assuming, am I right, Mr. Short, the amendment to the zoning, which according to the Attorney General, we could amend to do that. Okay?
Do I have a motion that we approve this amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
This time, I will close the joint public hearing, and we'll ask Mr. Coleman to address the council with their recommendation regarding the issue on the floor.
Yes, sir. The planning commission would agree that we would put this before you to accept this. That's written.
Okay. Any questions for our planning commission members? We've heard their recommendation. Is there a motion from council to accept this recommendation?
I'll make that motion to accept this.
Lady, mention. Sir, second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those, same side.
So that would really keep them out of town, just two and a half mile that way from school, two and a half mile this way.
Daycareers and all, yes, pretty well the width of our main street operations in the town.
Correct.
We want to thank our planning commission for your, for the work that you do for us monthly, and your, from meeting to meeting, we thank you for being here tonight. Tim and RD, thank you all. Drew, Indiana, we thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Well, let's do some good things. Let's keep it on a good roll here. For those who don't know, we have some national, national winners in our midst here tonight. We tried to set up recognizing them. I don't know how many months, Mr. President.
Very.
We did have a plan.
It's his fault.
His fault, that's right.
It'd have been a lot cheaper than, to be truthful.
You've had no two invitations for this. Those wheels didn't work for me. Okay. So, I'd like for Easton Delaney Breeding to come forward this time. You just keep getting taller. Got your tall shoes on, one of them. Tell her ease on. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and town council regarding the accomplishments of Easton Delaney Breeding, AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around National Champion. All-around champion. Great. Whereas Easton Breeding was successful in becoming the AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around National Champion, and whereas we recognize your hard, long, and diligent work to achieve this honor, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and town council that Easton Breeding be hereby commended in becoming the 2022 AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around National Champion. And be further involved that Easton be hereby commended for her commitment, dedication, and success that they have sent out. You just weren't here. So, we'll give you that person. Sean, can he? Come on, folks. Let's get around. I'd like a motion to pass that.
I'll make that motion.
Sir, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Yes, let's give it a little bit of a whirl. Let you go with this. Sean's gonna take her picture. You got everybody?
Yeah.
Parents, about?
Actually, I'm missing BM.
BM, where'd you go?
I don't know.
Say BM. Parents? Did you get up? Oh, okay.
No.
We're good.
Thank you, sir.
Well done. Here's your.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done. I'll just stay up here. Lucy Catherine Savage. How are you?
Good, happy.
Did you have a good son?
Yes.
Well, that son has.
She got a good shirt on.
That's right. Expressing the consensus of the mayor and town council regarding the accomplishments of Lucy Catherine Savage, second place, AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around Championship. Whereas Lucy Savage was successful in placing second in the AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around National Championship, and whereas we recognize your hard, long, and diligent work to achieve this honor, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and town council that Lucy Savage be hereby commended in placing second in the 2022 AAU Excel Diamond Gymnastics All-Around National Championship. Be further resolved, Lucy Savage be hereby commended for her commitment, dedication, and success. Congratulations. So those parents are really educating on something. Does this mean we have the national champion and the second place?
Yeah, we did.
In the country, in the nationals. On that day.
Yes.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
People take pictures.
Straight on. That's okay. Crystal can take it.
I'm gonna meet at the chair. Don't let.
Hey, parents. Are we good? Come on.
Yeah, I would like one of all of you.
With Coach.
Yeah.
Want to bump up here?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I think you should recognize this coach who's put in at least 10 years with my daughter.
Yeah.
No, 12.
12 years.
12.
She's been fantastic.
Yeah, she had a.
Coach of the year.
Yes.
She should say. National coach, man.
Town proclaimed.
Are we good?
Yay.
Congratulations, girls. Mr. Brain.
Hi.
Oh.
Congratulations.
We've all got to lots of.
Good having you here.
Good to see you, sir.
Hey, Gary? Did you care to run that back over, please?
You can have the favor if I.
Let you get a pass, yeah? Let's do it.
Picture.
I'll try.
You're longer on the side than you.
We're good.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
We have representatives here from, we're now down to worldwide equipment, Arnold Day, is it Craig Stollings? Is that correct?
Craig wasn't able to make it, but he was.
Okay, so Arnold, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank y'all for having me. I just want to give you a short one on how the rotation program and our companies develop work for your trucks that you use now. Your roll-off dump trucks, that type of thing.
Okay.
It's got four key elements versus our dealership. So about 12 years ago, we developed the only municipal program, any dealership went out on these trucks, it had strictly two minutes factors. So when we did that, we were trying to figure out how to get the low operating cost for towns, cities, counties, and even states. And so this program we developed with a couple partners, a body company, auction, and a cooperative contract company, off-source win. So what the dealership does is we spec the truck out that optimizes your return on. And it has a few more bells and whistles that you guys are not normally use. It has chrome mirrors, little marines on the front, a little bit chrome here and there because the auction company use it turns into retail customers, which that's what those guys like to have. So once we get a truck spec, we'll take like the truck, current truck you have now, Kenworth T88, we've got a number from an auction company that we use. They'll get, they'll kind of give you a guaranteed minimum. They guarantee minimum, they get paid right where they brings $1 for the minimum, that's what you get. Anything over the guaranteed minimum, you get 93 cents on the dollar, and they get 7 cents on the dollar. So that's how they get their income out of it. And there's four body companies we use. There's two dump trucks companies we use, and two roll-off companies that we used to take to the roll-offs with. And so we set that up then, and then SourceWeld is cooperative contract to keep you from having to go out to bid, and they do bidding process for you through MAP, this company we use because it has the best return for profit weekly. We carry ever product, pretty much, except for Frank Leonard Peterville, but MAP gets your best return at auction. So that's, the main thing is to get your operating costs down. I was going to bring you some numbers from the last auction, but things are so crazy right now, it would give you a false sense of what's going on, just to give you an example. We took a local roll-off company truck there. They gave $155,000 for the truck three years ago. They kept it a little longer than we normally do. They got a guaranteed minimum of $150,000. It brought $246,000. So the numbers right now are not what they normally are. Sometimes you lose a little, sometimes you gain a little. It gives you all the benefits of the lease without the benefits you own the truck. So the town owns the truck. If you pay for it however you normally do, the only thing is if you finance the truck, if the town does financing, you have to have a bank that's willing to release the title, the MSO, at the time it goes to auction. Auction has to have an MSO. If you're making them do that, we have a couple banks that we work with. We'll, we have one that'll actually let you do a large amount payment and hold it for the year, or they'll do interest only payments for it. So you're not really paying out anything, and then you pay whatever difference that comes up after auction. That's pretty much how it works. Is there any questions from you guys? Roll-offs, garbage trucks, bucket trucks. So it only, it pretty much works on the classic trucks. So if you want to do it, a truck, it would be your roll-off, shut-up trucks. The darts trucks, we're working on a program through worldwide itself, only once we sell you a truck, it's not locked down completely yet, that we will give you a guaranteed minimum when we buy the truck back. And we do it within the first year on this, so like Russell County's on it. So when Russell County does theirs, Brian Ferguson orders his truck before the auction, we plan which auction, he's going to send it, that there's four year. When he, we plan to have the truck to him at least a month in advance of the auction he wants to go to. And that's one of the things that we do too, for the rotation program, we guarantee that if the truck is built in here, if you're on our program, it might build one. We will have your truck. And that's something we can always do right now with all the other customers. So we track it, the rotation customers, where they have their trucks, they on rotation. If you don't like the number they give you at that point, you want to wait till the next auction, or if Lemon says, hey, I don't want to do this this year, we want to wait till next, they'll haunt a voucher truck, you do what you want to do with it. They just ask for when you're going to get the numbers, when they give you numbers, they'll, they'll want you to tell them what type of trucks, what they, and they estimate how much, that way they can give, you know, a safer pricing for you on your return.
What about accessibility of trucks currently with the market the way it is?
Right now, if you were to order a truck today, you'd be third quarter of next year. We are getting off to the off.
Okay.
So that have a big one, we'd be able to start, but we could start with one of your older trucks, if you wanted to use it, your T880, however you want to do it. Of course, you know, the T88 is a little bit older, and you've got trucks over there, it's not going to bring the money, the rotation one of those, but it gets you started before you have a down payment towards your truck instead of you're just going, throwing out a lot of money without anything.
Sure. The rotation is set.
Yeah.
What about service between rotations?
So the trucks are under warranty, that's why we, how they keep shop rate costs down. So the trucks, you typically are warranty, what they call bumper to bumper, separate part lines, tires breaks, tarts that you may tear, things like that, for one year, 100,000 miles, which I've never seen a municipality do 100,000 miles in a year on a truck. They have to be.
How often is a rotation?
We try to do it, a year is the best, year and a half, we have done it, and we've done as far out as two years for some places. Hawkins County in Tennessee does two years. State of Kentucky, the whole state does a year and a half.
We could do our own finance. I mean, we could do our own banking.
Yeah, you can do that. The only thing is, like, say, if you do your own banking, your bank would have to agree that the time it goes to auction, they will release the MSO, the title, to the auction company, and wait on their payment of whatever you have left over.
Or you mean self-finance though?
Do what?
You mean self-finance or do our own?
I mean, if we went through and say first name and address, or if we self-finance either one, we'd be better off self-finance.
Yeah. We'd have a title on hand at that point.
Yeah.
What about, you're talking about we would be third quarter of next year getting a new truck. What about some of these other trucks that are coming off rotation for like Hawkins County or even the state of Kentucky? Do we have any option on those, or is that guaranteed?
They, we guarantee them to have that option, and like prices, all right, you would be chikorpiing a new truck.
Sure, I'm sure.
Because they're getting, because the reason it's actually chikorpiing is, which some municipalities don't have to pay 12% federal excise tax.
Right.
And that's why it's working out that way.
And we offer that anytime we want.
If you, if you purchase a truck, say, I want to go over the rotation program, and four years, years ago, you say, we decided not to do this because the funds are not there for town to buy a truck for the next five years.
We can go ahead and buy it out, keep it for ten years if they want to.
Yeah. You purchased a truck right from the beginning, like you normally do, and that's your truck. And then we just take it in on our rotation program, where you utilize the option we have, and then we use this cooperative contract, that way you're not having to go through the headache of all the bidding processes and all that stuff. They do the bidding for it.
So tonight, it's a pretty wonderful, in general, it's an optional program. We buy the new truck from you all, then we have the option to make one, send it to ours. We just have to give you a heads up to have us a new truck in line for when we, or when we do want to take it to auction, correct?
Yes, September, December, March, and June auctions is when the auctions are. So we, we have to plan ahead enough time to say if the trucks are a year out now, or third quarter next year, we'd have to plan for the December auction of the next year. That's what we guarantee. Once the truck is on the ground, it goes to body company, has enough time to, which the body you decide to use, and go through that next stock, year, goes to that next auction.
Are you all currently having good lead times on those as far as them hitting their mark?
They, yes and no.
It's tough right now. I understand.
We've had, now Kenworth last year canceled 400 trucks on us, but we catch trucks on the rotation for the customers there, because they're typically rotations first come, first served. They're usually guys who already know the year and dates. If you're going to get your truck, we already know, the year ahead time, town of Lemon's in the truck for December auction, so we need to have it before you can opt out.
So you're not going to retail out from under.
No. I, that's why we have our own division for the municipalities, and so that, the retail sales guys don't even have access to our stock.
What do you mean every year? I'm trying to match, I'm trying to get my, you say we do this annually?
Yeah, you can do annually, annually, or you can do it every year and a half, or two years. Annually is the best because it keeps it under warranty. After the first year, you no longer have a bumper to bumper warranty on it. That's where it keeps shop rate costs down. So like now, say the truck, you actually have a truck in our shop right now, there will be no cost to you because that truck comes out of our shop, it's under warranty, everything's going to be covered and insured. The truck came out of there now, I don't know what the bill's going to be, when it's all said and done, that's something.
But where do we go when we're going to get the ECM and get it fixed?
Actually, EMIRO.
Oh, really?
Is that the computer?
I found one in South Carolina that had it overnighted. Just they was helping find that.
Oh.
That was a pleasure. There's some people like on engine control modules for months.
Yeah, there is. About each thing is on national backboard, so you have to have someone setting an electric computer every morning, ready to mash a button on it. And when it's on national backboard, they allow one per dealership. And where we have 47 locations in seven states, that means the whole worldwide, you have all 47 locations, so they're just going to hit a button on that one part.
Roll-offs and dump trucks.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Well, let me, I got one more question about the warranty. You said bumper to bumper for one year, correct?
Yeah.
When we, if we decide to go with this program, that doesn't eliminate the manufacturer's powertrain warranty though, correct?
No, the manufacturer's powertrain, you know, if you sell it, look back, the engine is two years, 250,000 miles. The transmission we use is three years, 350, and the rear end is three years, 350. The wirework product, basically after the first year, it won't go off the shoe wire. Anything, that's what they consider chassis, which is off the wire, or others, is where you have issues. And the after treatment on the truck, it's federally mandated, now five year, 500,000, but under the mandate, it's misleading because it only covers the filtering stuff, it doesn't cover the sensors that actually go there. So if you're going to plan on keeping it longer than a year, you have option to do an extended warranty, which we could put in with the purchase of the truck at time to help cover those extensions up to five years.
On the emissions.
Yeah.
And if the council doesn't quite understand what that is, that's the catalytic system, the DPF, and the DEF system, which is what causes the majority of these trucks to shut down right now.
Can't work it.
Agent information.
You read that?
One of the things that we offer to our local customers is if your truck breaks down and it's under a rotation program, I can get your truck, if it's able to be driven, I drive it to our dealership, I get it fixed, and I bring it back to you, so you're not paying someone. Man, I wish to do that.
It's a Kenworth truck?
It's MAP, is what we use on rotation program.
MAP?
If it's under warranty, I would imagine the towing, is that included in the warranty or?
Yes, sir. Typically, I mean, it's with the engine from the factory, and it's gotten on, it's really up to a year, and you can do an extended time warranty up to two years, 255 miles.
Sure. Drew, you have all the information you can go over with us tonight?
Yes. Yeah, we have.
And we'd be happy if you guys want to talk it over, come to another meeting, meeting with you. And especially if you say, hey, we want to look at your options you have for financing as well, and things that bring you that information.
So what happens to the truck you got now?
The truck that we have now?
So hypothetically, let's say the council's interested in this roll-up program.
So I would go to the auction we use, I'd get, they would take and give you a guaranteed minimum on the truck, this is what we'll give you for your truck at auction, if it, and whatever that amount is, you're guaranteed that amount. If you get anything over that, you, I do like seven cents on the dollar.
So we can apply that toward the new truck?
You can apply it toward, like a bounty.
They charge you seven percent, is that right?
After the guaranteed minimum.
After what?
After guaranteed minimum. So if your guaranteed minimum is $150,000, and your truck only brings $2, you get $150.
Drew, you have all the information, you can go over with us tonight.
Yes, yeah, we may.
And we'd be happy if you guys want to talk it over, come to another meeting, meet with you. And especially if you say, hey, we want to look at your options you have for financing as well, and things that bring you that information.
So what happens to the truck you've got now?
The truck that we have now?
So hypothetically, let's say the council's interested in this roll-up program.
So I would go to the auction we use, I'd get, they would take and give you a guaranteed minimum on the truck, this is what we'll give you for your truck at auction, if it, and whatever that amount is, you're guaranteed that amount. If you get anything over that, you, I do about seven cents on the dollar.
So we can apply that toward the new truck?
Like a bounty.
They charge you seven percent, is that right?
After the guaranteed minimum.
After what?
After guaranteed minimum. So if your guaranteed minimum is $150,000, and your truck only brings $2, you get $150, but if your truck brings $155,000, they start taking seven cents off the dollar, they do off the entire amount at that point once you get property. So really, you don't make a, to make money theoretically, you have to make about $10,000 over your guarantee.
So it takes seven percent off the whole, the entire seller, not what's over the guaranteed now?
Yes.
Gotcha. But currently, Mayor, you're talking about if we were to turn that truck, our Kenworth over to him to get auctioned, we're still waiting to the third quarter next year to get a new place. So we would...
Yeah, we're still going to fix it all in half.
Yeah, you'd have to wait till closer to the time, we go ahead and see, that's the process and get your order started, I get you a deal date, and we can pay the iron one auction, we can send your truck to, and closer to that auction date, get you your guaranteed.
So how long before, I may interrupt you?
I was just saying, third quarter of '23, which gets us to the next budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's July through October.
So how long before the auction date will you give us a guaranteed minimum on the current truck that we own? Or in the rotations, except we do that every three-year rotation, how long before that auction date?
They usually give you 90 days beforehand. That way you're, you can kind of say by then, we're going to have this many miles on the truck, you know what you're running, I'm going to have this tire for you. To be honest with you, most of our companies where they did the one-year rotation, they'll pull the new tires off the rear of the truck, they'll go and put recaps on it, use those recaps for that year, and then put the new tires back on the truck, where they're not having to pay an expense for tires because they did some wear and product, it's not covering much.
Is it a light motor? What kind of motor, a light motor? Transmission?
It'd be a light transmission.
Like a five-speed, six-speed, or?
It's a coil speed, it's automated handling, it's actually a manual transmission that operates like a automatic.
If you want to stay, if you want to stay in there warranty system, you need to do that.
I got you.
But we can discuss that.
All right, thank you, this is very good information. And we've got your contact info to get up with you, and I'm sure the council needs to discuss, go ahead and discuss this and look at our budgets and plan for the future. But it's, it's good to know the availability, particularly on the roll-offs and these death trucks, because particularly right now, that, that roll-off truck is in major need, we need it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
All right, let's see, next on the floor, Shelly, you're next. You off to come forward?
Sure.
Musical fiction?
I'm just going to.
She's just coming, she's new?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm the mouse, so. I was here, I think it was July, I think it was, about the accident at my mother's house. And so we've gotten the two estimates turned in, and both people that did the estimate, they both researched, and the siding is not available, it's no longer made. So, just piece on the end of the house, it would initially you think that'd be a good idea, but it's, it's like putting a lot of dirty siding up against the new siding, and it's going to be very obvious. So what we are asking is, we are asking that the entire house be, be covered.
Is this what you brought here? Is that quotes for both of them?
Both quotes are in there, the pictures on the front are what the house looks like, and one of the truck from that day. And at the very back is a copy of the check from the insurance company. The insurance company did send the amount to do just the end of the house.
Has the, have, do you have that scheduled, Shelly? The end of the house yet?
No, we have not done anything yet. We've been told by the insurance company that we could use the money and have the end of the house done in deciding that closely matches. And then if we don't like it, we could come and ask for the rest of the house to be done. But, you know, that, not knowing ahead of time, it's kind of like having a patchwork quit. We don't want the house to not match. So, we have not scheduled anything at this point.
Has, has anybody done any mitigation efforts to the home to try to keep water off the underlying material or anything like that?
What we did determine was, and I'm not sure if you can tell from that picture, the house, the siding was put over old, maybe old siding that was there, a different kind of siding. So it's not actual, I don't know what the technical term is, but it's not your, your just board wood, it's got some other kind of siding over it. I think it was called miter board, is that the name of the day? That's what it was, back in the day. So, you know that. So as far as having any weather damage, I think it's, it's been okay for now, because we were worried at first because the foam boards were flying everywhere, and we thought we were down to...
The wood?
The wood, but we were not.
So all of this, this estimate is just for the siding, there's no...
No, there's two esti, there's two estimates, and two estimates from each company. Each company gave an estimate on this.
But this is for the siding, I mean, the siding is all that's damaged.
Yes.
Outside siding.
Yes, outside siding. There's no, no internal, nothing that, nothing that we've come across, so.
You prefer one company versus the other, Shelly?
I don't really, I mean, I know both quotes are very, very close in, in their amounts. Elk Garden is the company that did the original siding. So that was the first people we called, hoping that they would know, you know, what kind of siding, what brand and all that, and they had all that information, but they quickly told us that they no longer would do that.
So they're within 400%, aren't they, of the other?
I think so, I know, it was, it was real close.
So the town paid off Elk Garden aluminum siding, is that correct? Versa, the checks for?
Versa gave us...
1,960?
It may be the amount for Elk Garden.
Which is, yeah, I think Gamble was 1,870 for that side. Elk Garden aluminum was 1,960, which is what it looks like, the amount of check they're giving for. So it looks like, Scott, they went with Elk Garden aluminum's, they're equipped to do that side of the homes. So they didn't go with the actual cheaper estimate.
I think, I should have said, they were here before, and I think her, she's pretty clear on her request here tonight, brought us appropriate documentation, so we're at the point to think that the council needs to decide our direction regarding this project. We regret that it happened, of course, I'll apologize for it to them, and let all wear it. But you know, things do happen.
Accidents happen.
So.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to make a motion that we put siding on the whole house minus the 1,960, that's the lowest bid, and if she wants the highest bid, it would cost her 400 and some dollars. We pay the difference in the, let's see, 11,000, which one was it, was it Gamble? Yeah. We pay the difference in the lowest bid, and if she wants to know what high bid, it would cost you 400 and some dollars, that's mine most.
Mine is what she's been...
Mine is what she keeps, all of that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I'd like to discuss that, Mayor. I've got a question, Drew, did we get the police report back from state police on the investigation?
Yeah, we got, Officer Stilner had that, and it was very, very minimal, anything but not really, called a nonmotorola accident, and about, they added...
So I got, I guess my question is, Drew, is, did the Virginia State Police find the town to fault?
I don't know if they did. It doesn't mention anything about that, it's, all states have non-motorola accidents.
They won't determine that fault on a nonmotorola crash.
It won't report what, so it's like...
If it doesn't happen on a public highway, it doesn't mean certain things, Virginia State Police calls a nonmotorola crash, so if you're looking for them to say somebody's a fault, they don't even have a fault person. What else would be involved?
So I guess my question is, looking at the second picture of the, of the actual brush truck itself.
Just me?
There's a line hung behind that, there's a line hung behind that brush truck currently. Does that boom up currently, Drew?
No.
That boom came down after he drove off. He drove, he drove off with the boom up, encountered the power lines, and in the process, the boom was coming down, but you can clearly see in the picture, the power lines under the boom.
Yeah, what's what I'm looking at, that's what I'm looking at, it looks like it's under the front of the boom, which is actually the actual pit of the truck. So what you're saying is that he was driving, the boom was lowering?
He took off before putting the boom down.
Andrew, you talked to the driver of the truck, and he did not lower the boom after he hit the power line? He stayed in the block.
Any further questions?
Yep.
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
I've got some discussion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I know that Elk Garden aluminum did the original siding on the house, you're fine with Gamble Construction.
If they don't, it will cost for 478 dollars.
I don't think it matters to my mother who puts new siding on the house.
And both of them can get to you within a reasonable amount of time, because they will put you off, a couple minutes, like I...
Hopefully.
Hopefully. I just, you know, I just want to make sure they can get to you a reasonable time, if one could, or still, I don't know, they can get to you. They say about, I'd like to ask them to amend the motion, but if you're, you know, to take the difference off, if you're okay with it, then we'll go along.
So we approve this amount, and then they decide if they want to pay...
We go on 9, 300 and some, like, my short check, the 1,900.
Right, because we already, we have that.
You got one check. And then if you decide to go back, who originally put it on, which would be the Elk Garden one?
We have everything additional.
Hold on, same here. I got you, just want, figured my head there.
No problem.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Fields amend his motion to let the end of the house be signed first, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't match up properly, then we move, then we move with what he's recommended this time.
I want to know that. Motion holds, Mayor?
No, I don't want to know.
You want to do that?
I don't think it's going to match, that's not her fault.
If they tore the end of my house out, I would want it patched up.
Let me see.
I would want it fixed back like it was to start with, and you'd do something, you'd do likewise.
Any further comments or questions? All those who played with the motion say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Shelly, because you're charloos to do what you need to do, and can with your... Thank you all for being here.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Shelly.
Yeah. Say it, be here, about 10 after 7:00.
Well, while we're waiting on him, Mr. Zombet.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, have you all got a copy of the proclamation that I'm asking you to consider?
Yes.
We do.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council. This was something I got aware of, a proclamation to be submitted to the town of Lebanon for pregnancy and infant loss week, or month, either, which is after something that Ronald Reagan did in 1988 for the country. The idea is that a lot of infant child loss goes unrecognized by families and by communities. I myself, me and my wife, Ellicent, have had three miscarriages that we've had to suffer through quietly, so to speak, because you don't tend to get parole pregnancies, any kind of a funeral or announcement, so on. Across the country, there is a process of doing this in many jurisdictions, based on the kind of reasoning that Ronald Reagan used with his resolution back in 1988. And there's also usually a day of remembrance during the month that is designated, called the Wave of Light designation, and that is mentioned in your proclamation towards the bottom there. And I am the pastor of a church that eats in a very fancy place called the Community Center of Lebanon, the town of Lebanon. And I have to say that in passing, that Shane Farmer's been very helpful today with ready rooms there. And I have to, well, thank the people, I thank Diane too, she's been a big help getting it ready for this meeting. This will include announcements in the paper and other places for women, men, families, friends to come to the community center for Lebanon and to have a special session at 7 o'clock on October 15th. All across the world, there will be opportunities at local time, 7:00 p.m., to have another wave of light that more or less passes around the world, as they put candles or lights out to remember the children who died in utero, or died in infancy, died in infancy, or as children. And we will invite the community, put it out in the paper, and give them a chance to come and express their grief, maybe for the first time. And we've got some wonderful people who will be speaking to them, and if this is passed newly, and I understand you have to maybe read it again, at another meeting, I hope that maybe one of the council members could come and read the proclamation to the people that attend that night. That would be October 15th, it's 7 o'clock if you're for a minute. If there are any questions?
We, we received this proclamation over the weekend in our agenda package, so we've all had a chance to review and read it. So at this point, I guess we'll, I'll ask council members if they have any questions, and then if they wish to approve this proclamation.
Pastor, come out with a question. This proclamation, is it, are we just proclaiming that October 2022, or is this going to be an annual?
It could be either way. When Ronald Reagan did it for the country, he did it for one year only, 1988. It has become a model for other communities all around.
Could you do it and then renew it?
Yeah, I think we normally do annual.
Yeah.
That would be good. We would be planning to work with other churches if we do this, and probably, it might be located in the future here in other churches.
Sure.
I should point out that, I hope it's obvious, the town has no financial obligation for this celebration of the Wave of Light. I should point out that I hope it's obvious that Tom has no financial obligation for this celebration of the Wave of Light.
Okay. Any other questions?
Given if you had a chance to read that proclamation.
It's, I'm sitting in my office. We're basically offering your condolences to somebody who's in that situation in essence, which I think is appropriate.
It's an international organization that prints proclamations, draft ones to be used, and I think that that definitely.
I see that title.
Do we need to do it in form, I mean, not just a draft form in order to have a delegation or the, or do we need to do it?
Jim, we could pass and make.
I was saying to just take out that heading.
I would suggest you do it just on an annual basis.
Yeah, I agree, because there's going to be other. Could be other groups and other service agencies, other churches that might want to be involved with this in the future.
We'd like to make this a continuing kind of memory service for the people of this area. I appreciate that suggestion.
Would the, if they from the October date?
Pardon me?
The year annually, would that be from the October date?
October fifteenth has been selected for every year. So that will not change. And the month of October has been selected in the past as the month of remembrance.
So basically, you're asking two things. We need, this is to proclaim October is that month, remembrance month, with a Wave of Light event on the fifteenth.
Right. We will be doing that each year unless there are other churches.
Well, I understand.
Right. The Wave of Light is concluded in the proclamation.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to make it, make it more generic, you can remove the name of our church, just say appropriate place.
Gary, will there be outreach to the other churches in the community?
Yes. I plan to speak to the ministerial association that meets at Pat's diner every month and invite them to take part in it.
Mayor, if I read this correctly, we're proclaiming October twenty twenty-two.
Yes, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or thoughts regarding Mr. Crum's request? Do I have a motion regarding this request?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, we're back on track. Diane?
Yes, sir.
Nancy, just love hearing you do this.
Yes, sir.
All right, now.
How's everybody?
We're good.
So I'd just like to propose to ask for a stop sign and maybe a children in place sign in place of three ways intersection. Fields and Conley.
Fields and where? Conley.
The stop sign that is there is disregarded frequently, and there are a lot of kids, a lot of. There's too much, too much cross traffic. People might be in respect for my system. Definitely slow people down.
Is there a stop sign on our net?
There's a stop sign coming up from Greg Fields property where it meets the intersection there, the Conley and the rest of Fields. There's not much traffic coming that way. It's all coming down the hill and up from the trailer park and the apartments. A lot of young kids, a lot of people that question their sobriety.
So a three-way stop sign?
I think a three-way stop.
Is that a town road or a state road?
It's a town road.
Can we do that?
It'd be a town road.
So they're disregarding the stop sign on Fields Avenue coming toward the main street. Is that correct?
No, he's talking about the one at the bottom of the hill. Comes, Fields goes down and turns into Conley, it turns left, there's a stop sign coming up out of Mr. Fields's property.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Coming from Fields Avenue toward Main Street, there's a stop sign.
Not the one at the top of the hill, he started one at the bottom.
Right.
Where across is Conley.
Where the intersection is a stop sign.
There is a, there is a current stop sign.
Coming out, and they're not paying the attention.
Some do, some don't. Most people, I think, are just complacent in their habits, because there's not typically a lot of traffic. But at times of the evening, when it's starting to get gust and the kids are out riding their bikes and people are flying down in there. It's just, I've seen, I've seen just in the last month, free situations that made me concerned. There's no, there's no sidewalks, there's nowhere for the kids to be, so they have no choice but to be in the street.
Really, I think I'd like for us to look at this adjacent, we need to really let me get Billy and Robbie and Drew to go down there with Chief. And how about this? Somewhere in my memory.
We're not allowed to.
I don't, children, children are playing signs, I don't.
That was the, the man.
Seems like.
Was that still one up in the man or a person?
Those next to the daycare, Larry's one up there.
V dot, though, am I not?
I remember, I know what you're talking about, V I had said we were shooting on some signs we could put up.
Yeah, that's what we need to find out.
I know it was with speed reduction signs.
Yeah.
I can't remember the other signs.
So I was going to say maybe that's another habit that was to reduce the speed.
I remember him saying specifically the speed reduction signs we couldn't do. And I think I remember that showing that place out.
V I told us we couldn't put children playing because that gives them the authority to play on the road.
That's basically what, that's what they thought.
Yeah.
They did say that. So that's why we used to eyeball it. It's, it's.
Absolutely.
So.
As long as we get something to look at, that's where it starts.
Drew and Chief and you, Billy and probably Robbie. And you need Kyle and Jeff out there?
Yeah.
And V I, Lewis. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, if we're not over any street signs, maybe the chief can increase patrol down there.
Sure they did. A lot of residents and kids in there, for sure.
And then if you put a three-way stop, that would help a lot, I think. Somebody will stop, I think.
Right. I mean, people have found every direction. You know, I, I've been fortunate enough, the friend Aaron and Jeremy have lived on the corner there. And I sit there and I watch the traffic and watching the kids. It's a, it's a little unruly for such a small little violation.
Okay. Let's go ahead with the electronic under new business group.
When is it? It's time to talk. I haven't signed up to talk.
Were you going to sign it?
She didn't sign me up. I didn't want to say much.
Right there, that's your time.
Can I have a minute?
Three.
One minute. One minute.
I just want a minute or two.
Don't let this. You just need to see Diane when you get here.
You're okay. That's my secretary.
Oh, thank you.
She needs to make fire.
And I'm a, I'm a.
I'm retired now, I have to slouch. Boy, you're guilty, but you had a whole milkshake area, you didn't even touch it.
You want it?
That's use. That's all use right there.
I'll take her.
You can have it, take it home.
Thank you all for your ordinance that you passed. What time to take care of some of this stuff. And I really appreciate it, that y'all was paying forward and none of this, that even I had my was going up all the. Did I hear daycare in here, too?
You did.
So that would be, that's really good. Just to grab, give my tent.
I don't see how that can be a good thing.
I mean, school will take care of it there.
The ones that's here, we gave them a map, though, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we'll figure something out. But I just want to thank y'all for doing that. And Thursday night is smart marriage. Be there, be there, be there. Everybody, let's get your pictures took if you can, put them in the paper.
I saw the change at the schools. There was a change date of the schools.
Yes.
Oh, the schools are all messed up, but it's.
There was a glitch. They put the Conley stuff in on those dates.
We don't need to worry about that.
She is awesome.
The school anyway.
Yes.
She was awesome. I'll tell you that. She went in there through a Friday evening and she said, you tell me what days you want and what school and it'll happen. And it happened at what time we wanted it, so that worked real good.
It was good.
So we all come out there and what's there that is going to hold? I just saw a new, a new soapbox now. Let's get ahead of this portion thing we talked about in class time. We've got to get ahead of getting into women's health or whatever it's going to be. And we don't need that. So all we've got to do is figure it out. All we've got to do is figure out, I have to figure out whatever we've got to do, but we don't want to do much portion clinics in there. And they'll do it. They're going to show that. They'll do it. They'll be trying to be soapboxing in there.
I don't think that'll work. I don't think that'll work. Soapboxing, I believe we.
I think you stop them soapboxing. And as we get rid of them with people mouth, you know.
Because I can't get them back.
Can't get them back in the place. So that's awesome. And I really appreciate it. I mean, soap, it does, I know a ground with a lot of balance, but it's near and dear to our. All right, I'll remember.
See you.
Aye.
Sam, Drew.
Yes, sir.
The county town code. What's that about?
What that is, I could, I could, I don't have to have that to talk about. What that is, if you all ever looked at the Virginia State Code, L S dot Virginia dot gov. You can go into the state code, and if you're looking for something in particular, you can type that in and hit search. Bring that topic up in the entire code. You don't have to search through the index and through the entire code to find a topic that you're looking at. And I talked to Ms. Diane about that. I talked to Drew about that, because we were trying to find a couple of things in our code. And it's the amount of, the amount of labor that they do trying to find things in our code. To give answers to citizens or to give answers to council members compounds annually incredibly. Because I know how much time I spend on the town code with questions from citizens, reading questions of my own. But even when you find it in one spot of the town code, it doesn't cover you completely, because it can also talk about it somewhere else that you didn't try to. So what that would do, it would get us technically and technologically, it would get us on board with the state. There's not too many municipalities that actually have that for their citizens or for the town employees to utilize. I think it would be incredibly valuable to the town to do that. I think it's what, three hundred and fifty dollars annually a year?
Is that through municipal?
The change to the ordinance was municipal.
That's, that's Washington County, I think, Washington County's.
Really, Ben's taken you to.
Sure. Unless there's not some kind of introductory fee and then the annual fee?
I didn't see any upfront cost on. Well, not only that, when you, when we do amendments to the code, it's a quick amendment. It's not, they don't, they don't have to print on it. We can print it if we want to. We get the electronic copy. And so does everybody else. We just upload that to the Town Lebanon website. So it's a, it's a simple, it's a simple fix for a lot of problems.
How long would it take?
Time frame? I don't think it, I think it's very clear. The way they're saying talks.
They give me information, they process it, right? Just turn it into a PDF format.
And then you can print, you can, we can print whatever we want to off of it.
So it's an annual subscription, basically, right?
It's already in PDF.
It's a scan.
Right now, ours is just.
It's a scan, you can't, you can't go in and highlight or search anything in ours. It's literally, it's literally scanned page that you just scroll through on our website. But the PDF version would be, it would just be.
It says Drew obtained.
And I mean, it's with the.
Wait until it's dead, that's good. Everybody good for Drew, then you live forward with that? This town declared fifteen men recess. Make it ten. Holding is yours, Matt.
Perfect, done?
Good time.
I'm going to get better than that Baltimore owner. Okay. Okay, so I figured I would update on several different things as far as the old mill process right now. One of which is, you know, and I know this isn't, doesn't have to be public information, but since we were awarded the grant, I want to be transparent about it as possible. We're tracking out right now, just on our expenses, not counting the parking lot, of about five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars following is what this project is going to run. That's approximately two hundred and one thousand for the building after we sold the land that was over on Main Street. And then we're going to have another two hundred and seventy thousand dollars ruffling improvements. I don't know if anybody was out by there today, but they installed that new big freezer cooler combo. It's kind of feeling like it's getting real now. And the parking lot we're still working on, he came back today and gave us an update quote, but we want to make sure before we do that, that we're out of the way with everything that might need to be. We're going to have to dig up the gas line and do some other stuff, so. And in addition to that, Heart Ones has another two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that they've committed for between equipment signage, you know, the decor and the training, those type of things. They've already got a couple of managers hired that they're putting up in Big Stone Gap that are training right now. They hired thirteen new people last week, which was.
It's a big thing for them.
We were pretty nervous when we weren't getting a lot of, a lot of management applicants showing up last week. There were thirteen people that applied and they said they were going to hire every. But they were all younger, you know, seniors, college-age kids largely, ten-oh-er anyway. And they said they were all just super respectful, sharp.
I mean, they want the heart.
Sixty.
Sixty?
They need sixty total. They want to hire fifty-five everyday staff and five managers.
Can you try out all the local high school, particularly seniors who have early dismissal and those kind of things?
Yep, I talked to all three of the principals. I'll say of the three, Tony Bush was just beyond helpful. He went so far out of the way to help. Joey Wong got it out, and then Jerich Parks got it out. And then we made a flyer type thing to hand out at the schools and colleges. You know, kind of highlighting some of the, some of the advantages working there. They run this.
Can we have that on our webpage?
What's that?
Do we have that info on our website?
I don't think I've sent it to you all.
Let's help you.
That'd be great.
Let's get the word out for you.
That'd be great. We're hoping that this Wednesday, you know, there's another really big, really big turnout. So that was, last week was the first week that they've done just the everyday, everyday staff, it went really, really well. They were definitely a lot more optimistic after last week than the, than the weeks before. We had all the new M locks show up today. We're replacing a lot of the boards on the outside. We're going to cover up where the cooler freezer combo is. We had it on to the front. We're going to enclose that as soon as the door gets here. It's probably a week out. Right now, we're scheduled to re-stain everything, or re-pressure wash everything September the thirtieth. And then the next, the following week, we're going to go in through and stain it all and get it all business seal. Behind that, we're doing the gutters and the downspouts, and then we'll be ready to turn it over to purple to move in the asphalt. They're shooting for a November first opening, but they're also not making any big grand announcements. They want to open for a few weeks and kind of work all the bugs out before they make a grand opening announcement. I've actually been in communication with Forty-Nine Wind Jester, and they're saying that, you know, schedule permitting, that they're willing to do an event for the grand opening as well. We're still waiting on the price that has been paid for it, but we'll hear it in a while. They've already applied for the liquor license. That's in place. It's posted. It's been in the paper. They're meeting with Sean Mitchell tomorrow as far as the permits for the food stuff. They're bringing new equipment every day. Southern States has been awesome. They'll bring a bunch of equipment and Southern States will bring their four foot over and put it through that door to nowhere, but now I don't know what I'll put it against the, the coolers there. So I think that's all the updates I've got as far as that's concerned. Any questions about anything before I bring up what I know about the bridge project? But you all probably know more about that than I do at this point.
We've been, I think, since you, go ahead.
Yeah. So I met with Nathan that day, and he, when I met with him, he said he was going to go meet with the town and talk through some things. So I would say your information is more current than mine. But my biggest issue with the bridge project as it was wasn't the cost so much. I mean, I guess that's up to you all, but the way he has it laid out, we're losing, you know, five or six parking spaces. Parking is already going to be at a premium. I met with Kim Ray today, and then we're going to try to extend the parking lot in my office on out and wrap it around towards the park. And we think we can get six spaces in there. And then we're going to, you know, try to set up some sort of. And then we're going to, you know, try to set up some sort of arrangement where the old mill will lease that space for me for overflow parking. You know, that's going to help a little bit, but.
What about his, so even where he has the bridge coming off the side, that loses parking spots for him?
He said he would go back and draw it out. He said if we're, if we're going to double park, you know, one side of the building or up against the building and then up against the creek, we would probably lose those spaces on that backside. Um, but, you know, short equipment, backing the software and seeing how it will lay out. I haven't seen the final product yet, but as of that day, he thought we would lose those spaces.
Well, we really, well, we visited the site down there with Nathan last Thursday, last Thursday evening. And, uh, we're also, we, the question came up, the same one you mentioned about parking spaces and. If any are lost. In the meantime, Mr. Short, Drew asked, you know, council asked Drew and Nick with our, with our staff, our construction crew and our own people. To see, uh, what we can do as far as building, because we, we built one here on site that they're shot across the creek. And we've had, you know, we've got some experience in doing that. And we're trying to find a way to do that without negatively impacting the parking.
Sure.
The issue is, is accessibility. Let's say you have someone that uses that parking lot. And they're in a, you know, let's just say they're either in a wheelchair or disabled. We have to meet those ADA requirements at the end of it on this side, on the old mill side. And we just don't know how that's going to look at, Matthew.
Sure.
But we're in the process of working on that. Maybe between what our guys are looking at being able to do. And what Nathan is talking about, hopefully we can come to, to some kind of conclusion to make the best use of it.
Sure.
And that's the plan.
And I think if we had to lose some spaces, having the bridge, the positive in having the bridge still outweighs, you know, losing, losing the spaces. Cause I think it's kind of twofold. I think not only does that make the whole area nicer, but it makes that whole part, you know, more usable. And we were talking about like Forty-Nine Winchester, for example, you know, the tentative plans to put them under the gazebo, you know, town permission, of course. Set up tables and chairs and stuff outside, right? And then let that whole kind of section be an event, an event space. Uh, you know, I think that's something that you could do now, but it'd be a lot more appealing, I guess, if you had a bridge and lay it connected.
That's good.
Together, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate your all's efforts here and as well as Kirkland's efforts. As you can, as you know, uh, every day you're asked.
Oh, yeah. Multiple times. People I don't know.
Folks are, uh, you know, they're excited about the opportunity and, uh, so sometimes I just. You probably get some phone calls because they're referring to you being the friend that I am.
If I sign, if you have any questions.
Cause you have a lot more knowledge of where you are on everything, so. But we, we certainly, this thing's moving forward. I'm encouraged by what you said about the employment status. And there's a lot of folks here and in neighboring counties that, uh, the college is another place, the Career and Technology Center has a culinary class up there. Who, who, if you remember, you remember coming to, uh, uh. Sure, what is that farm table event? You've been close.
I think I remember when, when it went on.
Close the streets. Well, they use, they have, they, they get the young men and women from the culinary class. And the college has a class now. And they're operating some of it out, out here at the government center. So maybe there's another resource to pull from.
I think Wayne's been in contact with Steven. Um, I had talked to Morgan originally and she gave me Steven and then I passed it on to Wayne. But I think one of the people they're hiring to be a cook is coming from the college. So hopefully we get a few, a few more. They've been doing the, um, open interviews from twelve to four and they're moving on from one to six.
One to six.
Going forward and try to give some more time to people that are maybe working with them. I know they pulled a few from Cheddar's, um, one from Logan's, I think, you know, that are there now and would rather come back here.
Cause they're from here.
Yeah.
They're driving down there now.
Right, so work.
So.
So this would be better for them to.
And I could be off base, but I think for a while when they open up, they're just going to be, you know, wide open. And I'd say as, as many people as they can serve, they'll.
Sure.
To take care of the neighbors. So, and they've got some, some, you know, some different things planned as far as karaoke, some bands, you know, to kind of get the panel firing out on the right.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt or any comments?
No, Matt, I appreciate you coming to give us an update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me. If you might have any questions, feel free to give us.
Alright, thanks, man.
Thanks.
See you later. Please, you're up, Mr. Short. Yeah, TBA, yeah. Ten of them today.
My manager's four gear. I had a few extra things on there. We'll start with, uh. Rob, Ben, update. I spoke to Joe Buck, uh, last week. And he informed me that they have started aerial and underground construction, or should be starting it very soon. Uh, they've got all the permits down with AEP, but I think Verizon's been difficult to work with. He said they have plenty of work left to do around Verizon's whole, to get those, those permits.
Do you have any idea, people were asking me and I was concerned too for myself, because how long would it, I mean, what? Two, three, four months or how long would shoot this be?
Well, we have a contract. They said, you know, they tried their best and managed to do it within six months and that was made, so that'd be November. Probably, like I said, depends on the contractor that they get to run it and then get the permits through Verizon. But, uh, when I talked to him, everything seemed to be true, we're on schedule. Uh, we got, uh, a guardrail quotes for Mr. Kaiser that came last month on most drive. He was concerned about the steep arcs on his driveway, which is steep and sharp curve there. I did go out to Billy and look at it. We could put a guardrail up there if it was light too. I think that would, putting the end of the trash truck getting up or the brush truck being able to get up there. Uh, cause they have to overhang that turn so, so wide to get up there to put a guardrail. So beginning of that and then the estimate for three hundred foot of guardrail on the post needed for that area, uh, that we got back was twenty-five thousand dollars. And it is a town road, so it'd be funeral fun. Um, we're looking at some other options as far as maybe some wooden guardrail or cable or something along those lines. But I just wanted to know where, and Mr. Kaiser know that we have looked at it and looking into it.
Have you talked to him?
I have not. I figured we'd try to get some kind of plan down for, for him.
Do we have, do we have what you, that quote?
Uh, no, it was just an email, a, 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 a formal quote. It was just email. Give the, the distance and what it would be.
And if we had the cake, if we had the cake, would you ask? How would that, some type of trash truck from going up there immediately that?
We're just going to have to look into it and see. The key is to be able to get far enough off the road. So like the trash truck and brush truck will be up there, but stay on your roadway at the same time. Go too far over, off our property, on somebody else's. But Robbie and Billy, we planned from one that I guess we can angle it out and see what we can get, get done. Arba.
He just asked us to look at it and look at the possibility of putting a guardrail up it.
Yeah, and it, he's got a, he's got a legitimate, sorry, I mean, it's sneaker, it's hard turns, it's hard slide, you can go off that. I mean, it is, it is steep. I just don't know if a guardrail is answered because I would, like I said, but everyone, I think there are kind of seven residents up past that curve. You would need bringing them down, haul a trash can down the bottom of the road. Uh, get paint, and then paint for us too. We've already got plenty of other places where we see trash gather or a bunch of them come together.
No, that's a, thank you, Drew. Just what you're talking about, the trash truck and brush truck. What about some of these bucket trucks with AEP and things like that trying to get their service, service those residents that come in, even fire trucks, emergency vehicles to make.
How many houses up on that heat?
I think I can see seven past that curve. Well, I said, we'll still do some research and see what's another option.
Actually. There's five. The other two are access from, from seventy-one. From, in, actually, the other two are, yeah, from, right, seventy-one.
How many do you use? Is that about three?
No, uh, Mr. Ferguson, uh, Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Muncie, Mr. Rayner, and Mr. King. Tim Kaiser and Pinky Cook, they, their driveway comes up from seventy-one, but that's, uh, the top side is closed, but there's no access to their homes from, uh.
Muncie Drive.
There's just five up there.
Gotcha.
But that's a, that's a ninety degree left at the tower. See, I would be more, to be honest, I'd be more concerned about, um, fire trucks getting up there. In an emergency as far as the structure fires, I would, you know.
Have to take a little bit. Our update, we discussed a little bit today at the finance committee meeting. Uh, all the items that have been purchased were a lot of core apartment funds, uh, and all the payments we've made for, until officially year twenty twenty-four, if we decide to move forward with that. Uh, our balance is forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
That's a good thing space to stand.
That's a very thing to say, we decided to move forward with those payments which we didn't vote for, so we kept those out of the, to make those payments up.
Drew, uh, was all of our water project covered with grant funds? Or was it that?
The art of funds as well. We're waiting to find out. We applied for Southwest Virginia Water and Water funding through, uh, council for it, so we're waiting to hear, hear back from, for that. Uh, that could possibly.
Was that, was that a, did we apply, how much did we apply for?
We applied for a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the materials. We also applied for a fifty thousand dollar, uh, sludge truck, curb trailer.
Sludge.
Sludge. It's never guaranteed, obviously, but Chris Martin seemed like he was fairly confident would get quite a bit of that, not all of it, so.
Next to the south, it's through Compton Plateau? Did we ever get a definite answer on using the ground beds?
That's what we've been doing. So we're paying, yeah, but we're paying sludge civic companies to haul it from.
Us to land.
To there, put on, to put on beds. So if we get the sludge, try to go to all of it.
In ourselves.
Does that seem, does that seem to be working?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, working good.
Do they, does the executive director and the, at the Compton Plateau usually make recommendations on those grants or are they, are they ranked?
Yeah, they would rank, they, they would present them to their, uh, board of directors and they would vote on those.
Uh, would it be advantageous for us for Drew to meet with the director instead of just applying through Lane Group?
It's always good to sit down with the person that is one of us.
Is that Scotty? Is that his name?
Yeah, I think it's.
Walt? Is it Walt?
Yeah.
And Jim's still there until December too.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe pay a visit group and even show them the project area if they're willing to check it out.
I know they met last week with ALC, I think, at Keith's fire site for, uh, for the C rock stuff that we wrote, wrote grant for to leave. They met out there at the old Carriage House site last week.
Tell us our project, maybe you can go too.
Yeah, I don't know.
If they're scheduled to allow.
They wanted to come see the site, the hunters did, so I don't, Debbie was telling me about it, so I don't know. I think it's going, I don't know.
The, um, I mentioned this one, that the, uh, finance committee meeting also, the street sweeper, the hopper for it. Uh, is in really bad shape, uh, as far as unusable right now, haven't been able to use it. So we've got some quotes, some different options in here, uh, and apologize to some of the, all the newspapers that we've got, that we didn't get a lot of these back until today or earlier weekend. So we're going to start on getting those. Uh, there's two newspapers. One of those is from, uh, Refugees and Recycle Needs of Wisconsin. Has this mount up on the left-hand corner. Owen has Billy's name on the top of his email. And then Owen, in, in the information package. It's self, it's from Atlantic.
Who's it from?
Atlantic Machinery Incorporated. Atlantic is where we got the street sweeper from. So this would be, uh, the same one that's on there right now. The Refuge Recycle Needs of Wisconsin that they've got here, it's Hopper Weldmont. Weldment, it's, uh, supposed to work, match up the same as the hopper that we have right now.
Play me the, play me that you're doing. Is it a invoice?
I have some other information. Yeah, Mike, get your, get your.
Yeah, one, one of them's from Twin City Welding. It's like a trade here, Mayor.
So there are three options. Two, uh, two invoice looking papers are for brand new hoppers themselves. Uh, and from Twin City Welding, that's for them to fabricate. We actually took it over there this morning to see if they could, uh, weld it back up if there was nothing left to weld to. So this price, price to fabricate a brand new, uh, vacuum box that they would put on there would still be the same framework and front cover. Uh, so this would just be metal, no seals or anything like that either. But, uh, like I said, it's, it's unusable right now. They took it over there and just kind of picked up a hammer a few times and just holes right through the rest.
Drew, we get, uh, I don't know, I know you are working on this. I, I spoke to Billy a little bit earlier about, uh, just so the council would have some information as far as. You know, can we repair it? I know in the past that, that it was requested, hey, why don't we just repair it and, you know, and that lasted, what, five and seven years? Does that sound right, Mayor? Um, but, uh, you know, I did talk to Billy a little bit about that. I think, you know, I talked to you as well, but, um. One thing on this, uh, this Atlantic machinery, there's no freight quote on here. Nothing's come from Maryland. Uh, and it's a hopper, so it's, it's a good sized piece of equipment. Uh, it's more of a drum style. It's going to be hollow in the middle, but still the space is what costs in shipping. So just keep in mind, it's probably going to be anywhere from, I would imagine a thousand to two thousand dollars of shipping. We've got a quote on shipping on fire layers, seven hundred dollars from Pennsylvania. So I would imagine that, that, that quote right there is going to end up being around twenty-six, three to twenty-seven. Would you agree, Drew?
Probably close to it.
The same on the now quote?
Same on the what?
This one here, it doesn't, it doesn't have shipping.
I'm not, I don't know. Where, where is now from?
From Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, I'd say the same if not multiplied by three.
Is it magnetic the one we bought it from? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what we were saying. That's where the machine came from.
To follow up on what you guys have done, Drew.
Yes.
Um, the only thing I'd recommend is. This thing is not, it's not anything special. I mean, it's, it's sheet metal broke, sheared and broke, welded together. And it's bolted to the frame of the truck around the vacuum system and the motor of that truck. Um, the only thing I would recommend is, is try to get us some quotes on seals, the new seals of the, you know, to keep it sealed up around the bottom or around the front of the hopper. Uh, that way it's light new if we go with the fabrication over in Bristol. Uh, shipping from here to there, we could do it ourselves on flatbed. Uh, we wouldn't even have to pay shipping if we were. Actually, we could take the whole sweeper truck over there, let them fabricate it and install it. And then we wouldn't pay shipping, period, if we went with fabrication. But I, but if we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars on getting that taken care of, and I think it's important because it, that's one thing. and I think it's important because it, that's one thing, it keeps these streets clean, uh, you know that, our streets department knows that, the council, it's important to us as well. Uh, we get compliments all the time on how clean the town eleven is, so it's, it's, uh, it's priority. Uh, plus, uh, we can sweep and get reimbursed through VDOT, uh, through our state street program, so it's definitely a priority of mine, um, but.
Is this the quickest way to do it?
Uh.
I think that's the one, over in Bristol.
Four to eight weeks.
Yeah, but it is, but I talked to Billy and I, and I asked him, I said, Billy, I said, what, what's the press, what's the press here? He said, well, he said, it's not a huge press, he said, once we start laying down salt, we don't use it anyway.
Yeah, that's the problem, one of the biggest problems that's wrong with it right now with all the salt.
It's, it's eating it up, so we can finish out, we can sweep afterwards after the Christmas parade, and at that point, that truck's going to be idled until April anyway, so they would have four months to be able to.
I didn't think it was worth it, man.
We don't.
Is it, is it operable?
Well, the bad, another bad thing about it is, when they took it back over there, they had to bust the door open, pull the door open to look inside of it, and the door was held together with caulking.
With caulking?
That was up five to seven years, we were just talking, make the doors off.
Lock them off.
No, I mean, the door's the vacuum.
Oh.
So it won't, it won't pull the vacuum now.
Oh, well, then it won't?
Yeah, I mean, I'll let it pull it anyway, so.
Oh, gee.
I just have a question, is there any way you can get the freight cost on the now?
The one from, uh, Wisconsin or both of them, Atlantic and Wisconsin.
The Atlantic is, the Atlantic is, like, uh, almost four thousand dollars more expensive, I'm just looking at these two prices for the refurbished, you know, basically one of the refurbished one and the now one, I'd be, I would just be interested to see what the, the freight is, I mean, if it's three thousand dollars.
It's also, the, the R now also, Billy, down here, they charge a sales tax too, on, on that price too.
For the.
So they're.
Thousand dollars for it.
So they're not letting this be taxed again?
So Drew Elijah, so we, would we have?
Yeah.
They just failed to do.
Would we, would we have the new hopper shipped to our shop and we would be able to install it?
Yes. I'm not sure, I would imagine, I mean, it's just a, put it back on and get those seals in there and hook up the vacuums. I mean, it's basically just a cover to it, locks, that creates that vacuum seal.
Is it not it, I mean, is that thing not crazy heavy?
That's, I mean, it's probably, well, it'd be cheap.
I'm very happy with what it was, huh?
Yeah.
The new one?
Yeah, the new one should be here.
It would, it would be.
I mean, we can handle it.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a good issue, but not only that, just like I, just like I was talking to Billy and Drew, if we, if we allocate that thing locally in Bristol, we take them to truck, they fab the box, and then they set the thing on the truck and then bolt it to the frame of the truck. So it's already, it's already installed, uh, and it's going to be way easier, just, just from my knowledge of fabrication, it's going to be way easier to have that truck there, plus we're able to set that old bed off, taking measurements off of it, and test fitting, you know, that, the truck to the new bed that they fabricated, so.
But what about the vacuum seals?
Yeah, that's what I asked Drew to get us, to get us some quotes on, was just the new seals that go around it, I don't think that's going to be.
And then who would, and then who would install those?
We would let, we would let Twin City install those when they did the installation on a new fabricated bed.
So you'd rather do the fabrication route than it is?
I'd like to know what the cost of seals are, and I'd like to know the freight, because diesel fuel, four dollars and eighty-nine cents a gallon, I'm just kidding, it's not cheap right now.
And Billy said.
Especially from Wisconsin.
That it's still susceptible to one at this point, we can still sweep.
Uh, you could, you could use the bottom part, it's the sweeper part, I don't think the vacuum's going to work.
Vacuum's not going to take that, it's not going to work.
There's too many, now there's too many air gaps for actual vacuum.
Yeah, the word vacuum.
Uh, yeah, you can blow it out the back.
Just at this point, she's thinking twin, the one from, where is the twin?
But if it's an edible, we got to get one, we should authorize the town manager to move forward, I mean, that.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I would just want to know what the real price difference is, getting the, um, seals quoted. If we're going to pay that for something that, I understand that they're going to fit it to that, and, but they're fabricating it, then a new one. I mean, if we're looking at basically a thousand dollar, I mean, not even a thousand dollar difference, you know, I would just want to know what the freight is. I appreciate that it is expensive.
Are you talking about the refurbished one or the brand-new?
Brand-new.
Brand-new.
The twenty-four thousand dollars?
No, we're talking about the twenty thousand.
Thirteen thousand, that'd be the sales tax.
It's nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars for the now.
You got a now?
No, I was looking for a hundred.
And you got a Billy Hughes?
I got a Billy Hughes.
I've got the Billy Hughes.
So you're thinking the total was the same, but you might not get a new?
That's what I'm thinking, but I don't know that it's going to be this, it depends on the shipping. Right now, they're comparing at the same price.
Well, we could go to Silver Springs and get it, can't we?
Yeah, we're, we're flying out there.
Silver Springs is in Maryland, it's where they see, he's at home, it was gone.
Oh, well, we can take you and try.
We don't have a flatbed?
Yeah.
I, I like this, whatever we do, with Scott, I'd like to take whatever action we need, we need that street sweep fixed. Or, okay, and it's, if we're getting started on it, knowing that it's what, two minutes, three minutes away?
This one says twenty to twenty-five business days for delivery, that's not a month.
Delivery, how many days?
Says twenty to twenty-five days, I'm just, I mean, that's what it says.
Is that sitting in stock here? Really talking.
That's the now?
Yes.
Which is Wisconsin.
It says in the tire part.
So.
Yeah, I can get quotes, I can get the price of seals and add to this nineteen-five and get a price of the freight and add to the nineteen-seven forty-five.
And I think that would make the decision, I, I mean, I think that would be the total cost included and that would help make the decision.
So we're waiting on us?
No, that means that he's going to email us, this is the quote, this is the new quote for, uh, Twin City, this is the new quote for now, including all the costs.
What does no shroud mean, Drew? Eight-four thousand hopper welding, no shroud?
I'm not sure.
Can we define that?
Yeah, because the old one has a shroud, the Atlantic.
Atlantic goes, that.
If Twin City's fabricating what they just saw, they're fabricating what they just saw on the bed of that truck. Um, and the thing about it is, is these hoppers, uh, last year, was Twin City going to be painting those, and he said that the inside, uh, would be primed, the outside would be painted white, uh, so they, they will refinish it.
So when you say fabricate, they actually build it?
It's brand-new.
Brand-new?
It's no different than what now does, and no different than what, uh, Atlantic, Atlantic, I mean, it's, it's a steel hopper.
They're not fixing, they're not working on the one we're taking.
They're going to take hours off, they're going to take measurements off of it, fabricate a brand-new and set it on that truck.
Oh, okay.
Well, then I missed it, I thought they were.
No, it's not a repair, it's, it's a brand-new fabrication.
Because it says quote to repair the vacuum, I guess that's what I was looking at.
That's, that's a new fabrication per Billy today.
Elijah, are you comfortable with street chairman moving forward and working with Drew, uh, improvement up to thirty thousand dollars, which is our tier on our purchase policy, where we have multiple quotes, and you two work with Billy and get us the, the best deal that we can at the thirty thousand dollars on fabrication or replacement and moving forward?
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem working with Drew and Billy hand-in-hand, nor do I have a problem going to Twin City and knowing exactly what they're doing. Um, I do, I mean, I've got some experience in fabrication welding, so it's, they're not going to be able to talk anything over our heads. Uh, and then with Drew's experience and Billy's experience, even if we need to take a trip over there, you know, for an hour and talk to those guys, I would rather him be able to make a solid, a solid decision on the price, and us feel comfortable as the council moving forward with what Billy and, and Drew decide to do, so I'm fine with that.
So your council on it before tonight?
Sure.
May I put that in form of a motion?
I'll, I'll second that, Mayor.
Further discussion? Have a question, did you say you go up there, where is this again?
Uh, do you know where Twin City is on, um, exit three there? You turn off Volunteer Parkway right hand before the Bristol Socks Stadium, right before you start at that hill, the Bristol Socks Stadium, you make a left, you're in a quarter mile, Twin City's on the right.
Okay.
Damn, it's replacement repair, or repair, up to thirty thousand dollars, street at me account, federal works director, town manager.
Okay.
And if anybody, to touch on that, if anybody wants to look at that sweeper truck, Billy left that sweeper truck in the parking lot of the town shop, if you all want to go by and look exactly what these quotes are for.
Give me a motion and second, any further discussion? I'll play to the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same side. Mr. Short.
Yes, sir, uh, number five is the tactical checks, I think council members talked in that close session for the change of thing, everyone yet. Next I have is their pedestrian crosswalk lights, we've looked at it past few times, uh, there's some pictures of those in the information. So, okay.
How many places do you speak, just one now?
Four.
Four?
Mm-hmm, right now, I'd be four, the, um, possibly five, we have to look at the red lights intersection where it has a crosswalk at the statue, we're not exactly sure if they do it, but if it's a red light, they're all red, they put on poles or how we'll do it. If you're looking at, uh, the Old Mill Park crosswalk, the Courthouse crosswalk, the, uh, church and middle school crosswalk, and the post office.
Do you have a price on these?
No, that's what I was looking at, TACCO is working on getting me a price right now, where I, I had to go measure poles and take pictures, uh, last week, and I was hoping they'd have anyone back by this, this evening, but you haven't got anyone yet, uh, really what I need to know tonight is, you're looking, between those four, you're looking on the high end, if we have to do our own poles and do a solar, uh, at each location, they're around fifty to sixty thousand for the four areas.
Each?
No, to the total. Uh, if you, if we get lucky, we can use some of their existing white poles and the power that's running through those and not have to do solar at some areas, it could be twenty to thirty thousand. But what I'm asking for and what I'm on here today is, like I mentioned, uh, I think it was last month, a VSIP, uh, program, it's a safety program that VDOT offers grants through to localities that maintain their own roads, uh. They're pretty confident, John Doos, that you worked with with the grant of four, through the, he's fairly confident that this would go, no problem, a hundred percent funding.
Oh, that's one, that's good news right there.
That's the good news.
What's the bad news?
It's for fiscal year twenty-four.
That's incredible.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I can find with that, wait until twenty-four and do that, apply for that, or you're looking at VDOT funds for.
Is there, is there anything in that VSIP grant, Drew, like, I, I mean, those solar panels are just kind of, I mean, I understand the cost of energy, but is there anything in there that says it would be, uh, any type of solar or high efficiency or anything on those grants?
Hmm, I don't think so, I think it's majority, all safety, looking at the safety side.
And you said the courthouse?
The Old Mill Park, working this way coming back, the Old Mill Park, courthouse, middle school, and the post office.
Okay, so the post office, as we're doing this lighting project.
And the middle school.
Yes.
Yep.
Those two, is this something we should prepare to work?
Conduite out and have a conference about it. Wasn't our goal mainly to address the?
School.
The school crossing? It was, uh, and I talked to, when I talked to, uh, VDOT, uh, about this one, and as long as we use pedestrian crossing, we can't really use school crossing because then it falls into the county, we have to fund some part of it, um, but, I mean, if you wanted to go ahead and move forward with one, you could, and apply for the rest.
I, I feel we're subbing it in there.
I think the courthouse crossing is kind of.
Yeah, that one, that one.
But especially with the new one, and you get Kirkland's and the theater, it's, uh.
Well, let's start with the middle school.
Middle school and the courthouse.
Well, that'd be fine, uh, well, that construction, well, we got juice there though, off of those posts, right there at quarter, right below the hill there, at the bank.
Yeah, we have, the ones that have already been installed, you have to look to see what we could pull out of there right now.
You're saying there's a power, you know, there's a power box like we have on Main Street for the fiscal, right behind Carter Bank on Mid Street.
Oh, I see, you're talking a meter base.
Yeah, there's juice, yeah.
But like I said, right now, uh, the only answer I was looking for was which route you want to go for, if you want to go for the, the grant full, I'm gonna grab.
I like a hundred percent of those too.
Yep.
I would study in, just while we're working this way, it'd be crazy not to, just in case we need an alternate source, we have to do it ourselves, use VDOT thing.
Uh, and then the last thing I have that's not for closed is, uh, our van that we're going to be replacing for, uh, town hall uses for sending surplus. What, how do we want to go about purchasing that, I know you, I've looked at those websites and said, I just don't know if you want to get three that look good and give you a quote, do you want to look on some of those since you got the knowledge of it, uh, do we go to the auction, like you have went to in the past?
You've got, you've got access to Statesville, which is Mannheim, and all those auctions across the country is what I gave you.
Okay.
So what I would recommend doing, Drew, is, is I would recommend finding what, what you want or what the council decides they want, uh, I would recommend sticking with the town and country van, which is now called a Pacific, uh, that way, Mr. Ian has those electric side doors, you can haul seven people in, if you want to, you can lay all those seats down, haul water supplies, whatever you wanting to do, it's just a, it's just a utility vehicle. Um, but also, when all the seats are up, it's a nice vehicle, which would represent the town well, uh, what I would recommend doing is probably staying fifty thousand miles, somewhere close around there, uh, if we're wanting to get a used one, um.
Last time I looked at anything new was like twenty-two months.
Sure, well, it's just, right now, it's just, the, and it's no different than that ECM with that roll-off truck, the microchips are not, there's none of them. And that's why the new, that's why no V, there's a very, there's a lot of vehicles on the new car lots, it's all used stuff, um, they're just, they just can't get them produced. Um, but there's, there's several of them out there, I think we filtered that down just in ten minutes here in the town hall, and then what it popped up, twenty-nine or something like. I would recommend white, matches all, I mean, that's me, but now you've got other council members and the mayor here, so I think, I think you all need to give an opinion as well.
I was hoping, I was hoping if you and Drew and Dog could go to Statesville, find a, just get one.
I was, I was hoping to see what the price was on state bid, but twenty-two months.
Uh, if you go to Statesville, they're on the lot, right, just like we got the, our trucks.
Well, just like, just like, just like I just explained, Drew can look at exactly what's sitting at Statesville right now.
Right now, okay.
And he can look at what's in Texas and California and Florida and Pennsylvania and every man of auction across the nation.
So you can find it without traveling?
Yes, sir.
Can you get it, can you bid, I mean, can you lock one in?
He can, he can lock one in, he can purchase it, and he can have it delivered.
Okay.
There's even a quote for that, uh, we would just need to, we would just need to, I would probably need to discuss that later on, on moving forward with how to do that.
All right.
So there's no new ones inventory anywhere?
Uh, I can't answer that, I've seen very, very few that are at decent prices.
And it's according to what we want to spend, we didn't talk about what we want to spend.
Probably didn't figure out.
Um.
Yeah, just double check, there's not any available anywhere, Drew, if you would.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen, nineteen, the forty, the forty-five to sixty thousand miles, or what were those running anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-eight?
Say around, probably, yeah, twenty-eight, thirty, probably.
And those should be on state bid, I mean, I would think.
Those are easy.
So, I'm just talking about whatever kind of.
Civic.
Yeah, whatever kind of vein you're looking at, there should be an equivalent on state bid, and I would think whoever won that state bid, you know, would be most likely to have one in versus somebody else, possibly.
But we've had, we've.
Or at least have them on order coming in.
We've had barely did luck with those sweepers.
Some safe place for you.
So not saying I'm going to spend that kind of money, I'd just like to have the information, probably make the decision on a use one.
Okay.
See, uh, and I lie, I do have one more thing, in the information packet, Chris Dye has got some quotes for the, uh, check valves and the underdrain system that failed. It is a confined space, so we can't, uh, repair those. We've got quotes from, uh, Seal Boggs Municipal, who gave a quote, the wrench out to Little B, but, uh, didn't receive one back. It's about going to around the, that confined space entry. And we have, uh, Boggs Municipal's come back with a quote for the four-inch flange and full-back swing valve at five thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars.
That is to reinstall.
Put that in, that's better information.
Yeah, so I have to lift the.
Last page, I think, sorry.
Hopper, quote.
Uh, and it's with this down, the reason this was, uh, important with this down, we can't operate our belt press, which drives the sludge.
We're gonna have it.
Yeah, we do.
Need a motion to authorize town manager to obtain the equipment we need at the wastewater plant. For a second.
I'll say again.
Further discussion?
I would like to discuss it.
Yeah, I'd like to look at the quote, just for a second there. Go ahead, Elijah.
And that's, that's where I was going, but I'd like, I'd actually like to look at the quote. Um, is this the only quote that we have, Drew?
It's the only quote we have now. Like I said, Chris called, I think two or three others that used to do confined space, no longer do. Uh, Little B still does, but he never got back to them, and I know Seal does. And the quote is a little, it does mention, you know, that the base foundation center, the log pit for inspection, they basically quoted off what they could see from the top. Uh, and what they've worked on, say, or Seal, I've installed those originally, I'm not sure.
Is there a possibility of getting another quote or two, just, just for reference?
Mm-hmm.
I can, I can write it. And if it's, and if it's close, if it's close to what we've been presented here within, we'll have Big Mary's motion. But just in discussion, if it's within five hundred dollars of what we've got, I'll be fine giving you authorization to move forward.
I misunderstood you, I guess, Drew, I thought you said this is an immediate emergency fix.
Pretty immediate, yeah, uh, for.
Tell us again what it, what these do.
This is your check valve for your underdrain system, and the old lab, the new lab, uh, the biggest thing that you can't use, that we can't use right now is the belt press.
Which does what?
And.
Takes care of waste.
It drives.
Okay.
Set waste.
Okay.
For us to be able to haul off.
Stuff that doesn't go through, it's all this stuff that gets caught.
Yes, well, it's what happened, it's what is taken out after the last, last stage, I'm getting rid of it.
Before you go to the dry beds.
These, this took care of the dry beds, they don't use the dry beds because it's belt press.
Is there a, and I, and I've misunderstood that, so we're down.
We're, we would be short, I mean, we need a big, pretty, pretty, we've got emergency stuff we can do, we can use some dry beds, right now, we can put it on some dry beds. Uh, and we can hold on to as much as we can, but everything's kind of backed up with the, Roll Off has been down, it's kind of backed up already.
I understand that. Um.
Drew, I'm just, I'm Elijah, I mean, we need, if all possible, be able to get multiple quotes due to our purchase policy between five thousand and thirty thousand dollars. If you've got to lean in and help the department head to get one, I mean, email don't cut it, somebody's not getting with you, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
And I know we've got an emergency situation, I'm willing to move forward, uh, you know, just document that, you know, we reached out to, uh, Little B, and that we were able to obtain a quote.
Mr. Dody, I'll make my motion to say that if it's within the six thousand dollar range, that's five hundred dollars above this quote, is that what you said, Elijah?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for Drew to go ahead and move forward.
Who had, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
I'll resecond that, I'm in motion, Mayor.
Okay, motion in second, name, did you get that? Changes, I mean, I'm per the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same side.
That's pretty good, so you can, either just like, you know, you can reach out to them, they can back to them, and they'll do it, you know, there's.
No problem.
I can add any questions or anything else?
I have some questions, actually, I just want to make something clear, uh, with the, uh, with the sweeper truck?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we were, we were talking about that shroud.
Yes.
Uh, I think, Mary, did you ask about the shroud?
No, uh, Mr. Dody.
Mr. Dody, right here on Atlantic Machinery's quote, uh, the hopper assembly's nineteen, seven, forty-five, which is right in line with, uh, the R and L quote.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it is the exact same price, but, but just below it states a shroud with hopper, hopper with suppression, which is forty-five, sixty-seven, fifty. So, this R and L quote, when you add the shroud and the suppression, uh, these are to the penny.
Close.
They're, I mean, they're, no, they're to the penny, these two quotes are for the hopper. But Atlantic added the shroud and hopper suppression, which is going to be the seal.
Okay.
Um, so both of those quotes, I would imagine will run twenty-four, three, thirteen, forty-four, except one, R and L's coming from Wisconsin, and they increased shipping. We don't know that, we're hypothetically, we would assume that, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear that.
And, uh, like I said, we hit you a computer today before the roll-off, uh, it's coming from Florence, South Carolina overnight, it's got one-year warranty, uh, and it's Pack Car manufactured, so it's not a Pack Car. It was, uh, three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and that is it.
The gentleman that's here is, the business puts it out?
They will take it to them, they'll install it.
Okay.
Drew, uh, cameras, were you able to get quotes? I know, I've noticed in the accounts payable that we keep having to pay Jacob, uh, you know, pay the technologies to pull, to pull, uh, footage.
Right.
Are we any closer to getting DVRs for our own facilities, and also quotes for all of our different operations?
Shane and I looked at a few others the other day, and then we're also, I talked to John Mike, to see what they have, uh, out of our department, because he says they bought them, hooked them up, uh, they don't pay any subscription, nothing, and they have full control over them, have the DVR, you can pull it up and install it any time you want, so we're looking at, uh, Amazon, and looking at different ones. I think we're going to be able to do it all in-house. Soon as we start trying to install them, but, and it really wasn't crazy expensive from what I thought it was going to be, so I think.
Will we turn again loose to take care of that between now and October?
The cameras?
The cameras.
I think we already did, as far as, as far as the facilities, we are. Eight cameras and a, eight cameras and a DVR for a couple hundred dollars, most, in most places. We may step up a little bit more from that, just maybe five hundred dollars for a section of those, uh, we just have to decide where we want to put them, and, uh, I think power and wifi is basically all we have.
That would be like the Ring or Blink cameras, I think is Amazon.
Yeah, there's, uh, a ton of different brands and that kind of stuff, but I think.
And that's going to be something that you.
They're all wired, so we would have to be the ones figuring out how we can wire it and get it to the DVR, but other than that, I think we should be able to handle it all in-house.
Which if a rec center, it's already wired, so it's just floating fluid there.
Mm-hmm.
We just have to find the cameras and put it, plug it.
For an adapter.
Yeah, those are, those are. Those are, it takes that, it's, and, uh, you take like, uh, any other locations that we're looking at doing, we would have, we would, number one, have to have a power source.
Mm-hmm.
And number two, had to have the cat pipeline for the, for the information, which will get the signal going back to the DVR.
Right. Whereas most places, we should have all that, if we're looking at plants, and I think the shop may be the trickiest one, it's a large different area, so I would hope we're right.
Did you have, did you mention that to Lane Group about including that into our technology package, so that way we're not going back and rittering, we need to do that, we haven't done that?
I didn't, uh, you're talking about the theater?
The theater.
No, I have not. And also, I looked at, uh, have you seen the newer preliminary thing that I've got, uh, Mackie Lane sent a new one back with all the CD and that kind of stuff, and I'll get to it.
But he still.
They're there.
He still, uh, didn't change the, uh, that was my, I thought Scott was on that email. Uh, he didn't change the farmer's shares that we had.
Yeah.
From three to two, he hadn't changed the quantum for two or three, so I gotta get it fixed up now, and print it out for us.
Well, that's got mentioned there, I'd like for you, Drew, to get those changes made.
Mm-hmm.
That we need to off, we, we need to go ahead and authorize them to bid this stock, bid these out.
So, no, Mayor?
You're good?
I'm good, I mean, it's, it was minor details, it was just adding, uh, you know, I just thought we, you know, because we're doing a technology package, we have the, you know, the movie systems, the lighting, the sound, it'd be crazy not to go ahead and do the cameras. We're going to do cameras in there, do that, while they're in there doing.
Not only in there, I think, if we're going to have the, if we're going to have the cafe area outside that we just met on last week, you think it'd be wise to have one of those?
And Drew, remind you, fourteen days, not thirty, okay? Fourteen, not thirty. You think you have, Drew?
Not unless you, oh, there's a bid or a quote in that packet for the miller, let's get this there.
There's, uh, also in your packet and your information, uh, just, after the ARPA spreadsheet, um, we're doing that water project down on Big Cedar, there's a eighteen-inch high-flow coal planer, uh, that Billy got us a quote on, uh, it includes a water tank and wiring harness to use on our TR seventy, which is our compact, uh, track loader, that's the case. Uh, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, what that will allow us to do is mill our own asphalt for projects like the water project down on Big Cedar. I think, you, you all borrowed one from Little B, is that correct?
I don't know how they build it, obviously, I don't know if they even mill it when they put the patch of wax over.
There was some many.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Little B actually let the town borrow, uh, their miller, they just asked that if anything was broken, that we repaired it, if we broke any teeth, that we replaced them.
It's not too late to ask.
It's not, I mean, you know, to be honest, I think, I think we actually could probably send them a letter, or Drew, give them a call, and tell them that, you know, we appreciate their assistance. Um.
Does that mean we need two more quotes?
Well, it's just something for the council to look at, it's, it's one of those things, no, no different than if we have to cut across Main Street to, to do, you know, fix a water line or whatever, we can actually mill our own asphalt.
Okay.
And the transition, when we go back and repave, should be smoother instead of just a, a hard, you know, a hard line that you cross, uh, which aggravates me tremendously. Um, the Blue Diamond eighty-four inch hydraulic angle rubbery broom, uh, that's actually, that's actually like one of the big brooms that you see on the front of a, uh, in front board by how the tractor that looks to the PTO, that you see like on VOD roads, uh, if they're, if they're moving a lot of gravel, whatever, keeps the roads clean. Uh, they're usually at an angle, that way they're sweeping that debris off the road, uh, and then once that happens, then our sweeper truck comes by, picks up whatever debris, you know, beside the road. But when we're doing water projects, just like Big Cedar, prime example, we've got the mud and gravel and stuff in the road, uh, they can bring that, that, that broom over top of it, and it, it eliminates the majority of the debris left by them.
Okay. There, Drew?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Brad gave me, I asked Brad, he called me today, but he wasn't able to make the meeting, and he gave me an update that the sign for the fire department, uh, I was planning on asking about it, but I'll do an update to council, maybe deliver it as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
Then, I had another question regarding the fire department, the F thirty, F thirty-two.
Yes.
Are we working on getting that door repaired?
We are, we're getting, still getting quotes, we actually just got, is it, uh, is that the one, we just got back from World Wide, that had to get a turbo actuator put in it. Uh, but yes, we are getting those quotes, sending that off, uh, Scott heard, working on getting some more of those, John was supposed to get a couple of them, never did, uh, I've got two right now, more time to get two more.
And then, my understanding is the captain's truck's got damage to the hood?
I, the chief's truck?
The chief's truck.
Uh.
So I think we need to work on getting that repaired, I'd like to maybe know.
I'll take one answer.
Report maybe, to check out what's, what happened with that asset as well, and let's work on getting that fixed. And what was the date of the auction, Air Force auction? September first? Should remember that.
Once we have Morgan Wallen, Councilor, here, we'll be advertising that, sorry this week.
Maybe just take our stuff over there.
Yeah. Anything else for Drew? Also, just to remind everybody, there's a flyer at your desk regarding the Alzheimer's training, I believe it's the Community Center, we from the bar. Uh, there's a flyer at your desk, and this is, uh, we're trying to bring this service into the canon, I think you work in Tennessee, but there's a lot of folks for this disease, we probably have friends and family that are suffering, or have suffered from this, and now, hopefully, they're going to bring some services to our region, is my, is that, Drew, understand?
Yeah, there's two meetings up there, there's one that morning and then one at eight.
On the twentieth.
Yes.
Thank you, Drew.
Sir.
Chief of Police, Mr. Baskins. Chief Baskins, I should say.
Just, uh, you go through the numbers in your packet, there's, uh, for month of August, we had forty-four total subjects in arrest, fifteen traffic, twenty-nine criminal, twenty-three misdemeanor arrests, six felony arrests, and thirteen total motor vehicle crashes, one DUI arrest, seventeen assist motors, we responded to three hundred and fifty total costs of service, and nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one total miles patrol. Just a couple real things there, but, again, I put in that investigation monthly report there, you can see total criminal cases and traffic coming there. Um, again, this is just kind of new cases that they take on, and they're coming in, they definitely reflect if they have other stuff that they're working on, but just the new cases that come in for August. And, um, Councilor's, uh, monthly active report there, he was five times, we had him come out to assist officers, uh, he did help with some meetings with Commonwealth attorneys, and meeting witnesses, he took in eight new cases. Uh, six times, we had him come out to do school zone for us, and he participated in twelve more services. He had a couple, uh, cases, I listed down at the bottom, some of his bigger cases that he had come in, uh, this month. Sergeant Hart, uh, he couldn't be here tonight, but he said he would get some stuff together for the next meeting, and, uh, request to come into the session with you again, and have another update, I could do most before, and have that for you, but just to let you know, for the month of August, there was seven successful purchases. Multiple drug deals containing meth and Suboxone, uh, he did purchase some meth and firearms from some convicted felons in town, and he participated on some federal search warrants. Uh, also, I did come out a few times, um, to help with some interviews, have some, you know, guys interview on some people, so, that helped, and had him come out and assist officers a little bit, and he brought some training. He's also getting ready to go up and, uh, push some more training next month with the task force, so that, I'm keeping him up to date on that. Uh, Chris Sneed, we had sixteen. Chris Sneed, we had sixteen total C-TAC transfers, he did come out for a couple meetings and probably helped perform an emergency medical call on that. I've had a meeting at the breaks and talked to some of their health people, and they're going to try to help us out, having to sit with these QDOs for so long, so hopefully something will come out on that, so we don't have to tie up officers or something like that for so long. Self and Drew, we talked a little bit today, and just kind of let you know, going forward, you know, we're going to, we talked about increasing some patrols within the schools, so if you get phone calls or something about why we're walking around schools, that's, we're just going to increase some patrol patrols in the schools and stuff like that.
Increase your community policing.
Yeah, I think we would be doing, we talked about, that's something typically we've done every year, we just kind of got off to a little slow start on this year, but we've talked about that, to get that going, we're going to start having a few more department meetings within department, and I've been trying to, many days having a colleague running in on their days off and overtime and stuff, but I think it'd be good to start getting more face-to-face time, I would imagine, department meetings and stuff like that. We had mentioned some active shooter training, maybe with Burson and everything, and we can get Burson to do that, and also, I can, I'm a three-level alert active shooter instructor, so I can do some in-house training with that, so we're going to probably start going a little bit back to, you know, about that, I think that's all we really have talked about, I think that'll give us a good start. I was going to reach out to you, Mr. Ward, it said you, you had texted him about fuel mileage, and on that, I know if you look at the numbers there, and you just kind of take the total miles and divide by that number, it kind of skews it a little bit, but I think it's what, what has happened on that, is he's doing a full tank of gas, he's put a full tank in, and then the mud changed over, so that's why it looks like he's got, because I don't think there's any way, he got ninety-two gallons of gas and just went three hundred miles.
Well, the three point four miles per gallon, and he stated also that he switched cruisers.
He did.
So that probably, if he had a good, good, I guess they're using their own cars, is that how you're getting?
We have fuel keys that go in each car, and they should stay in the car, I, I really think what happened is he's, he's randomly, he's fueled his tank up the last day of the month, so it's, this number is showing a full tank of gas that wasn't used.
Right.
Does that make sense? It's still set in the vehicle before he changes, so why that looks so disproportionate? I don't think, I don't think he's really getting three miles a gallon.
No, his was way, his was way off compared to everybody else's, which I think in August, he was off a little bit.
He was off a little during his baby, and, and he did switch cars, we got that, was one thing, too, the new cruiser's up and functioning and good to go now, so he was one, when Mr. Heard took the new cruiser, Mr. Ward chose his pick-up to a newer cruiser, so he switched out too. So it's just a little, it's a little spook, I think he kind of got worried and texted in there, so to reach out to you.
No, it's no problem, I typically run the fuel mileage on all those in my workplace, but I've never seen it on three point four.
Exactly, that's why, I, I think it's just to do with that, and it may be a possibility if he did get in a new car, that it didn't have the fuel key yet, so he used his fuel key on that new car, but either way, just to, to make sure of no issue, I have Scott check that car, make sure it's not wrong.
I think by next month, sometime I want to do it again, because there's three point four again up.
Right, also, we do have all the estimates on the cruisers that are damaged, and starting to get those in, but word of course is, is it'll be October, the earliest before they get them in, so I saw Drew talk about maybe reaching out to other places and see if there's anywhere that can get them in quicker, and so up and happening, so.
Chief, back on that mileage, it looks like we, we put ninety-eight hundred miles on our police vehicles, which is three hundred and twenty-seven miles a day, and you guys are great as far as, you know, anybody that community calls, they'll have idea what I'm on vacation, increased patrols, I know that the, you know, the new wildlife, you went and asked for some increased patrols as well, but you think, I mean, that just seems like a lot, I mean, a big number to me, three hundred and twenty-seven miles a day of patrol, or, all, all mileage, I guess.
Yeah.
I, I kind of agree with the mayor, I think that community policing will help drive that number down too, you know, getting out in the community, whether it's storefronts or visiting stores or visiting citizens, I know we've got a lot of, a lot of outdoor ballgames coming up, whether it's peewee football or even the high school games, but anyway.
Yeah.
I'd just like to challenge you guys, maybe to, you know, have less patrol miles and more community policing, you know, by whatever definition you think that is, and it sounds like, sounds like, you know, we're on the right track.
Absolutely, yes.
Keep that balance though, keep that balance.
Yeah, they, they, their job is to talk.
I want them, they need to be in the communities, they need to be in the subdivisions, we need to make sure that we have a good balance there.
Well, that's, that's what community policing is, you are in the subdivisions.
Well, are you going to walk the subdivisions?
No, not on foot, no, I mean, you stop, I mean, you, you stop in, if you see somebody in the other yard, or you see something, you know, make, making a note, make you a, a list of every business in town, try to get through everyone, a visit at least once a year, for every business that we have in town, I mean, that would be two options, but to me, you're still in the community, you're still, you know, you're still close to your car when you're needed, if you get called, I mean, I don't mean, you know, park it here to Town Hall and walk out to lawn jobs.
I understand, I think I understand.
You know what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying a patrol of like four hours, might be two hours worth of, two hours, two hours, you know, a couple hours out of your car somewhere.
Absolutely, yeah, I understand your intent, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to have to explain it to me just a little bit more later.
Right, I think, instead of driving through Fox ministry, times like, maybe twice, you have to walk through Fox.
Okay, okay, I've got you.
A little bit, a little bit more face-to-face.
Look for excuses to get at, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, they will absolutely, keep the patrol systems used to, and, and still try to find a way, you know, we're in our shifts, we got four officers on, running through our shifts, you know, you know, the miles bracket, if you look at it that way, but I understand your intent, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, he knows where, where there's, where there's areas that may not be able to.
We'll make sure citizens still see the cars.
That's, yeah, that's what I mean, I want to make sure that they're comfortable, that they're protected.
Yeah.
That's all I'm, I'm just trying to balance to my head.
Chief and mayor, did we know for sure if the county is providing us radios or not? Did we ever get that clarification?
I've not heard anything else on that.
Supposed to be getting ten.
The, the last I heard was that they, that everything was still in motion.
Is that, is, who's the guy that push them in at nine one one that?
Bo, Bo Box.
Didn't, Alonzo said they turned all that over him, as far as buy them, distribute them.
Well, now Bo was the last one I talked to that told me everything was in motion.
Did we? Did he have radios?
He just said everything's in motion.
Can you clarify, should he answer, he's probably, you're going to get an answer quicker than I am.
I will, I will go face-to-face talking tomorrow, and you know, the last time I had talked to him, I even mentioned the possibility of maybe just getting enough radios to have, so everybody, the initial, want to have them stuck here, I think I mentioned that to you guys too.
Check them out.
Have some here, check in and out.
And I understand Bo saying he's going to let you keep your radios for low, just be able to communicate amongst yourselves, if that's possible.
He had told me that we could keep them, and the town guys could use them.
Yeah, in the park, in the.
Yeah, like the street crew.
Street crew, but anyway, I think you'll have better luck finding out than I'm having.
I'll have a sit-down with him tomorrow.
Okay.
My understanding is rigs and hunter had a booth with their vehicles, correct?
Yes.
I'd like, when we have an accident, if it's not sensitive information that we can talk about in closed session, I'd like it to be included in, in the.
Absolutely, and I will, and that was the thing that I had talked to Drew about back today, is rigs and hunters, and what had happened is, they were sitting at the fire department, door to door, they heard, they, it was the night, they were looking for the motorcycle, they heard a motorcycle, rigs went.
One went, one went the other way.
Well, they went the same way.
And they hit each other.
Exactly, so, and the way I had interpreted the policy was, if it was like, if it was a reportable crash, if someone was deemed at fault, then obviously they would be put on probation and all that, and I guess I had, I had mixed my views with the way the police work, a reportable crash is to the intent of the policy of vehicle damage, so from, from henceforth, any damage, I'll just report that, instead of it being deemed an accident, and I do have the incident report that, the night that happened, and everything, so we've got that on file, but I'll, I'll be sure to include that, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anything else for chief?
Have you, have you been in contact with the sheriff's office as far as, you know, communication-wise, as far as being in the schools, I mean, they, I know we're kind of worried about that being county property, but.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they encourage, they, they have a problem, I've talked to Coach, I talked to Coach Hall on a daily basis about stuff, you know, I'll drive through, my son goes to recess at eleven thirty, so I drive through at eleven thirty, he didn't have it with him, so I talk to Coach Hall all the time when he comes, and feels very happy to have us in there.
I'm sure, because I know a lot of times resource officers get called out and do different things, so I think, I think working with the county, Eric, I think that's a positive for everybody.
Yeah.
These schools are inside the town limits, so, you know, if those guys are gone, or they get called out, and we need to step in and walk through the halls for twenty or thirty minutes, show a presence, I know one thing, make the teachers feel a lot better.
Absolutely.
But also, just, just GLP leaves parts in the parking lot, it's just a deterrent.
Absolutely.
But also, back to community policing, it looks great in the house.
Absolutely, we're, but yeah, feels, has, he's, they encourage.
Because I know there's times that we have, we ask for their assistance when we're down on patrol or events or whatever, so just helping out back and forth, I think it's a good communicator tool.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Taylor?
I'll get mine on detective.
Close session.
Yes, ma'am.
Any community reports tonight?
It's a council's pleasure to have an ARPA meeting prior to our October meeting at five P.M.
Well, I wanted to have one, but after I saw what's in the.
No fun time, wants to be able.
Because I ain't to have one, you took that one with you.
You're going to afford three thousand dollars, man.
Yep, I'm not ready for that, I'm good, if you, if you're good, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good.
I'll wait till Christmas, teach you.
May last a Christmas, Scott.
Okay, like to entertain a motion to go into executive session, two point two dash three seven one one A for the purposes of item one, personnel positions, and number seven, is requested legal consultation. Some good. Is there a second?
Second.
All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those same side, standing in court, executive session.